Welcome to the Frontier Regional and Union 38 School Committee Joint Meeting for the Purpose of Interviewing our Superintendent Candidates. We're going to start off by doing a roll call, Call to Order of Frontier Regional. Judy Pierce.
Here.
William Smith.
My man.
Keith McFarland.
Here.
Robert Decker.
Here.
Phil Cantor.
Here.
Mary Raymond.
Here.
Robert Hala.
Yep.
Alan Lipp.
Yes.
Lynn Roberts.
Yes.
William Mera Pacey.
Yes.
Cindy Womat.
Yes.
Sir?
We'll call the meeting of the Union 38 School Committee to order with a roll call, starting with Conway, Janice Warner. Elaine Campbell. Philip Cantor.
Yes.
Ira Band.
Yes.
Carl Anderson.
Yes.
Sunderland Douglas Fulton. Keith McFarland.
Yes.
Greg- Gregory Goshaw.
Yes.
Maisy Shaw.
Yes.
Michelle Tomlinson.
Yes.
Deerfield- Mary Raymond.
Yes.
Trevor McDaniel.
Yes.
Jamison Isler. Gee David Sharp.
You wrapped in there.
Whately School Committee.
Patty Kavanagh's in there.
Donald Skroski.
Yes.
Robert Hala.
Yes.
A little entertainment going on here. Katie Edwards.
Yes.
Thank you. I would like to just remind the Union members, there are voting members and non-voting members. All members are welcome to participate throughout the evening, but when it comes time to vote, we will only be asking for votes from the voting members. And just to refresh people's memories, for those that don't remember if they're a voting member or not, for Deerfield it's Kenneth Cudaback, Jamison Isler, and Gee David Sharp. Conway is Janice Warner, Elaine Campbell, and Ira Band. Sunderland is Gregory Goshaw, Douglas Fulton, Keith McFarland, and Whately is Don Skroski, Katie Edwards, and Bob Hala.
Off for Frontier, everyone votes. So approval of minutes of February 22nd for Frontier Regional, we are not going to do that tonight to give our secretary plenty of time to write 'em up, Union 38.
And we will also table the minutes to the next meeting to allow, and also allow us to stay on time with the scheduled meeting.
Okay, moving on to public comment.
Could I just, as a lead in-
I'm sorry.
No, as a lead in to public comment, I just want to mention to the committee members and the assembled public that today we did receive a large volume of email correspondence from faculty and staff throughout the Union and region. A total of 15 emails were sent. We tried to get them dispersed. I don't know if people saw them in their emails or not, but I just, if you were unable to see them, I have copies that you can have access to. So, just wanted to pass that out. Now you can.
Thank you. Public comment? Seeing none, thank you. Again, thank you. Okay, so we are going to bring in-
No, no, wait, wait a minute. What she meant was that there's members of the public that wish to share an opinion with us, now is the time to do that.
We already had that conversation.
Oh.
Because if there was a member, then we had to set it up so that there was time to do that.
Oh, sorry.
Way ahead of ya.
Good job.
Thanks.
It's been prescreened.
We've been prescreened, yeah. So, moving along.
I'm waiting, we need to get her to be brought upstairs.
Okay.
Bring her in momentarily.
Hopefully that's not her ringing the bell.
I hope she's not in the elevator.
No, she's in the prin- she's in the principal's office.
No, I never did that, but I always wanted to do that, you know, second floor, you know, sports wear.
Poor Patty's gonna have to walk up.
Jamison's here.
Jamison's here, no?
Just for me, it's a dessert, so I didn't have to walk up. Thank you so very much, I really appreciate it.
Jamison present.
I believe she's here, I'll go get her.
All right, we are ready.
Are you ready?
We are waiting. Did tell me it's dinner.
Gregory's here.
Yes.
I mean Douglas is here. I don't know why I do that.
That's good.
I mean, we were on collaborative.
Well, that's your, that's your thing. Yeah, because you talk first. Okay. However, I think we both go over and say hi to her when she comes in. You wanna do that, we both go over? Or, you know what, stay there, I'll go over.
Okay.
Kind of breaks that whole tension thing, don't you think?
Can you throw me a minute, please?
If we got a crowbar?
Thank you. Good job.
Who's boss?
Eighty thousand dollars and you don't have a crowbar?
Hit the button, go back down and walk up. Okay.
Oh my God.
We'll call the fire department.
Thank you.
It sounds like her.
I don't know.
As long as it's not, who's in the garage?
Probably beat the guy down, on the money.
Billings.
I know, but, I know, I know.
This is a test of all.
We'll pipe it in to you, Patty.
What is your elevator?
I told Patty, I get Darius. He must have a key to try.
Somebody have an elevator key? Sarah, do you have a key?
Darius' key.
Yeah, Darius will take care of it.
Darius has had the funniest.
Sorry, he tried it.
Darius already tried it.
Did you try it yours?
He did something.
I hear something now.
Okay, this is very unusual, but very exciting. I mean, not unusual that, she's gotta fix it. We're here, Patty, don't worry. I'll talk loud so you can- Ladies and gentlemen, I'm gonna use my outside voice, I'd like to introduce Lynn Carey, who's a candidate for your superintendency. Some of you already met her during her site visit here. Those of you who didn't, it's too bad. She's a good candidate, and this is the hot seat, as it was once before for you. Here's the questions, there's your water. And if you have any questions of them, ask the chair. Thank you.
That's her.
I'm gonna turn it over to you.
All right, and I'm gonna turn it over to Kenny, after I tell you there are many mints, there's cough drops, there's sugar free, there's water. Can't find it, let me know, we'll get it. And Ken, go ahead. And the distraction in the elevators. Yeah, the distractions. Just see how you are with distraction.
Fine, flexible.
Where it says Cindy, it should say Ken.
Welcome again to Frontier Regional and Union 38 School Committee, and, you know, we're pleased to have you here tonight. What we'll do is ask the committee members to introduce themselves around the table, and we'll start with that, so if you want to start. Douglas Fulton from Sunderland, Maryland.
Hi.
Hi, Cantor from Conway, Frontier.
Judy Pierce from Sunderland and Frontier.
Bill Mera Pacey from Frontier.
I'm Lynn Roberts from Frontier.
Trevor McDaniel from Deerfield Elementary.
Hi.
Rebecca Chalk Sunderland.
Maisy Shaw Sunderland.
Jamison Isler Deerfield Elementary.
Ira Band from Conway, Grapper.
Keith McFarland Sunderland Frontier.
Michelle Tomlinson Sunderland.
Jan Warner Conway.
Carl Anderson Conway.
Katie Edwards from Whately, Delaware.
Don Skroski Whately.
Elaine Campbell Conley.
Mary Raymond Deerfield and Frontier.
Alan Lipp Frontier.
Phil Smith Frontier.
Bob Decker Frontier.
Hi.
Bob Hala from Whately and Frontier.
And Cindy Womat Chair and from Frontier.
And I'm Ken Cudaback, Chair of the Deerfield Elementary Committee and the Union 38 Committee. So, the format this evening is going to consist of three parts, we'll invite you to make an opening statement. We will then have a series of, we have 10 prepared questions for you this evening, and then we'll allow you to have any comments or closing statement that you wish to make. We've scheduled approximately an hour, we've used up five or six minutes plus the elevator time.
These are a copy of the questions, so if somebody's reading them, you don't have to, because they're from everywhere, so you don't have to ask for them feet.
So you do have a copy of the questions in front of you, and so, it's all yours.
Thank you, so I'll get started. I apologize to any of you who have already heard this before. I was here on Monday, and I said a lot of the same things, and the story hasn't changed, because I'm the same person who was here Monday, so, but for those of you who haven't heard it, I'll start again. What brought me to Frontier? I am a Massachusetts girl. I was born in Springfield, I grew up in Chicabe. My husband was born in Warwick, and he grew up in Ludlow. We've, I've been married, well, since 1979, so, you know, and then a couple of years before that, you know, we were together, so quite a while. And when he graduate, he was, he went, he went to Ludlow High, and he went to stick, and then he was drafted, and when he came home, he went on the GI Bill to UMass, and he became an electrical engineer. I grew up, I went to school in Springfield, I went to an all-girl Catholic high school, and then I went to Holyoke Community College, and I have an associate's in corrections. Because my dream when I was 20 was to be a probation officer, because I really thought I was gonna change the world. And so Michael and I got married, and he took a job up on the Canadian border. He is an electrical engineer for power plants, and hydroelectric is his specialty. And he did that here when he was in college and when he was in high school. He worked down at Vernon, at the power plant, the hydro plant there, at Vernon, Vermont, in Northfield. And so we were up there, and we had our children, I finished my college degree, I became a para, and I worked for Title I. And then his company was sold, and we moved back, and we wanted to be near family. Again, his family's very entrenched in Warwick, so we came back and we moved just over the border in New Hampshire, very, very, the next town over from Warwick. And I started working, and I was, I worked in sped, and then I worked in, I have fourth grade, I taught fourth grade, and then I became a guidance counselor, and I just kept moving on from there, only because, only because I wanted to, I just have this innate motivation, and this is really what we want for our children too, to motivate, to constantly be the best person you can be, to try really, be really cognizant, and make meaningful choices in your life so that you continue to grow. And that's what I've always done. And I became an assistant principal, and then an interim principal, and then a principal, and then a director of elementary learning, and director of curriculum, and assistant superintendent, and Title I, Title II-A, Title VI, PD, teacher certification, I've just kind of done it all. And I really do appreciate challenges. It's just something that makes my life interesting, it makes me want to get up in the morning and come to work. So, when I found Frontier was looking, I really didn't know if I had any chance at all. I applied, and I was thrilled when Pat called. So, I'm thrilled to be here. It's, it's not, I know, I come from New Hampshire, but I'm really not a New Hampshire native, I'm a Massachusetts native. And so I know that this is a lovely, this is a slice of heaven, this is really God's country. I am a, I, everywhere I went, Sarah and, Sarah drove me around to the different schools, and everywhere I went, I couldn't believe how beautiful, just beautiful, the landscape is, and the people are so just friendly and open. It's a wonderful place you have. And thank you so much for having me here tonight.
Thank you.
Don?
Okay, I'll start it out. Please give examples of quality programs and/or educational policies you have implemented in another school district. And could you please give us examples of programs that were not successful, and describe the course of action you took as a result.
Sure. And I've talked a lot about this, so again, I apologize to anyone who's already heard it. I, as a director of curriculum, but even before that, when I was a principal in Charlestown, New Hampshire, it's, it was a very poor, very economically disadvantaged school, 50% poverty, and so I worked there. We were not making, we were not a Level 2, we were more like a Level 4, and we were chosen by the state to, as a recipient of a FOCUS grant. And so what I did in my school was really, you know, really had that hard look at literacy, and how we're teaching literacy. And I did research, and I often looked to Massachusetts and what they do in districts around, particularly around here. And I have a sister-in-law who's a principal in Hubbardston, and so she also, you know, she has different friends who are principals, so I would glean a lot from that. And what I did was I implemented guided reading, and foundations, and foundations of phonics program, guided reading is not a program, it's a practice that includes running records, it includes, it involves teaching for strategy. So you, when a child reads, you do a running record, and you find out where the reading's breaking down, and how, what you can do to help the child overcome those specific things that are getting in their way. And we saw great improvement, the school was awarded the Commissioner's Circle of Excellence Award because we improved so, so much in the course of the year and a half, and we were thrilled. So, I think the short answer to your question is implementing research-based best practices. Everyone who knows about education knows that education is constantly evolving, so there's always the newest best thing coming. But because education is growing and learning and new opportunities, there's a lot of research out there. And we need to take advantage of that, and we need to, when you take on new strategies or new ways of teaching, or, it takes time, it really takes time. The beauty is Massachusetts, of course, you know, they're right in the forefront. Leslie University, they have great, they have the, they have great, Fontis and Pennell, they have, you know, great stuff at Leslie University, there's the Reading Institute in Williamstown, there's just, there's a lot of great stuff in Massachusetts. Programs that didn't work, in the district I'm in now, they have been using a math program that, for 15 years, and it really, it wasn't meeting the needs of the students, and of course with the new standards coming out. And what we did is, what I did is put together a committee, a focus, a focus committee, a math curriculum committee. Anybody who was passionate from K to 12, passionate about math, got on the committee, and we spent a lot of time looking at different programs, different districts that had, you know, the levels of success that we were looking for, and how they transitioned, and came up with two finalists, not unlike this, this system here. And we brought in a lot of people, and how do you feel, what do you think, how do you think it would go best in our district, because it's not just about changing, it's about, it's about, I'm looking because I, am I not loud enough?
No, you are.
Oh, great, thank you. I've been told that my voice is very soft, and I always thought my voice carried, but I guess not. You know, so we did that, and that was, so we did, and we actually adopted a new policy, a new, a new program, and putting it into place with all the PD, and that's something that would refer to your question, what didn't work, and what was the course of action, you know? But if it's working and it's great, then you don't, you don't fix it, maybe you want to improve it or tweak it, but you wouldn't want to change it. Thank you. Judy? Hi.
How have you worked with town governments, parents, and the community of ours to generate support and trust for these schools?
Great question. Title I is, you know, they have a lot of parents, parent involvement, it's kind of required with Title I. One of the programs that, that I've done through Title I is called READY, in capital letters, with an X, Ready for Kindergarten. And so we reach out to people who have children from newborn up until five years old, and we have programs where they come in and they get a really nice, three times a year they'll come in and they get a really nice gift bag of Melissa and Doug toys, but they also, we also teach them how to use it, how to use the toys, and how to enrich the children when they're playing with them, so that there's, you know, there's some meaningful interactions while they're playing with the children that will help them grow, and help them, you know, see, learn different skills, as opposed to just mindless, you know, television watching or whatever. One of the ways that is great with parents and community is to put out on the website surveys, how, you know, this is our strategic plan, we want to redo our strategic plan, what are your thoughts? Not unlike the survey that you did when you were looking for a superintendent. So you're actually giving the community at large, the staff, and the students, and the parents, the opportunity to speak and be heard. And working with town governments, it's very important to have a great relationship with them, particularly the, you know, the police department. But you also want to, you know, to have a really strong relationship with the fire department, the selectmen, to be able to listen to what their concerns are, and where they're coming from, and who their constituents are, and to be able to kind of mitigate that with the needs of the school and the school district. And so a lot of it is communication, being involved in the communication. Where I am now, we work with the town, with the budget committees, and the budget committee are, is formed of members from the different towns that represent the selectmen, and also too, definitely, especially when there's something that's really an issue that we're all thinking about, going to selectmen meetings. about, going to selectmen meetings in the different towns. My father-in-law was a selectman in Warwick for, I don't know, I want to say 14 years. I could be wrong. Maybe it was less than that, maybe 10. But he was for quite a while. So that kind of, that's the New England way of doing things. And everybody has a voice that wants to be heard. And so I think that those kinds of interactions, that kind of communication and openness is really important. And not being afraid to do it, to really go right out there and say, this is, this is what we're thinking. What are you thinking? Lynn? Oh, no, sorry. Lynn, you have the next question. Read it yourself. Okay. Hi, Lynn. Oh, hi, Lynn.
Hi. What do you believe is the role of the superintendent in the areas of curriculum, instruction, and technology? And can you describe your previous experience in these areas?
Sure. I, right now, I do direct a curriculum. I'm the Director of Curriculum, Instruction, and Assessment. In this district, we are so blessed here. Frontier is amazingly blessed because there's an elementary and a secondary curriculum, curriculum people, which is fantastic. The technology, where I am, I am a technology integrationist. He meets with me once, once a week. And we are always communicating about how are, we have certain assessments because we don't rely as much on the, the state assessment to tell us much. That's more of a summative, and they just, you know, kind of tell us what we're doing. But how are we, progress monitoring, how are we meeting the needs of the kids? And what's, what kind of programs, what kind of, you know, assessments can we use that, that can tell us where the students are? Also, we have certain, different software and different licenses we buy that can help the teachers in planning, particularly planning for STEM or STEAM lessons. And so we keep up on that every week. In curriculum, instruction, and technology, I have, I meet with my reading specialist once a month. And they're, they're a fantastic crew. There's probably six of them, seven. And we, we kind of all have, you know, the same philosophy. We're different, and we have different ideas, but we move the district forward in literacy. You go slow. I've written a district literacy plan for sustainability. If I leave or if I stay, we need to adhere to one. We have an older one that's just kind of outdated. And so we, you know, we're working on that. As a superintendent, I would definitely, coming in as a superintendent, I wouldn't change anything, or, you know, I would like to learn about what's happening and what, you know, the learning is, and how are we doing RTI, how are we doing interventions, what's happening with our struggling students, what's happening with our highest performing students. But I think that the curriculum at this point is in very good hands. I think we have some talented people. And they're so easy to communicate with. So at this point, as a superintendent, it would just be maintaining and facilitating, you know, helping them to reach, you know, the goals that have already been set. And if it's time to make new goals, then we do that as a team. It's certainly not about one person making a decision. Phil?
Good evening.
Hi.
Phil Cantor. I'm going to ask you about budgeting philosophy. I'm going to ask you to describe the steps that you take in to build school budgets, and again, to advocate for those school budgets. What are your priorities? And if you could sort of answer that within the context of that continuum of budgetary philosophy that we talked about earlier, that on the one end is the strictly institutional, where your budget is determined in the institution without regard to the world outside the schoolhouse doors, and then you seek to persuade that world to adopt your budget. On the other end of that continuum is the strictly political, where the local selectmen will tell you what they're comfortable with, and then you impose their number on the school. So if you could...
Thanks. Thank you. This is the quintessential question. This is what it's all about. This is where a superintendent's rubber meets the road. This is what it's about. And I will tell you that when a budget is developed, we, and I'm going to give you the short story because we all know. But you start with the institutional. What do we need to keep the facilities running, to keep teachers working, to keep the, you know, the employees, and keep the students in the kind of, you know, the kinds of materials and resources they need, so that the teachers can do their job, and the buildings are being, you know, heated, and the, you know, the roofs are put, being put on, and all those other things.
The elevators work.
Yeah. Yeah. So...
Little detail.
We start with that, the nuts and bolts. And then what we do is, I, this is what I would do. And I don't know what the real system is, but I could tell, in Massachusetts or in this district. But I go to my principals and my other leaders. So my curriculum people, my principals, I would also become very, very tight with the financial manager, or Patty, whatever her job is.
She ever gets her.
Yeah. When she shows up, and then I'll be very close to her. But I, you, you go and you say, okay, what are the needs? Because we want to continue to improve. What are the needs? What do we really need to improve beyond the nuts and bolts? And then what are the wants? What would be in a perfect world? What would we need? And you also go to your director of special ed. All these people, is your cabinet as a superintendent, like a prince, like a president has a cabinet, superintendent has a cabinet. And these are the people that are going to inform the superintendent of what, what would be the next step to improve what we're doing, and then what would be the best of, you know, the best of the whole world. And then we need to compromise, we need to mitigate, we need to discuss what, what we really want to advocate for. What is really meaningful? What, what do we need? And the principals would get that information from their teachers, from their parents, their community. We would all work together and bring all that information to the table. And then we would look at justifications. And we would make a justification for each piece so airtight that people would really understand. We would make it, the pros and the cons, but what, what we could do with this if we had this, and why is it so important to our children and to the future of the town, and what, what kind of impact is it going to have? Because the most important piece that we're all here for, every person in this room right now, and even Patty, we're all about those kids. We're all about those children. So what, what do we need above and beyond the nuts and bolts, you know, to, to move ourselves forward, and to, and to be really, you know, to be really fiscally, fiscally sound and fiscally fair, but also to, to reach, to reach the highest limits we can. We want to set high expectations for the district, for our schools, for our kids, so that they can reach them. And what, what do we need? So we would decide, and we would think, and we would consider, what, what do we need? And then we would make some really, really strong justifications. And from that, my team would develop a PowerPoint. We would develop a very clear explanation of where we are, what we have done, where we want to go, and why are we asking for these things? So that any voter out there can understand why we're asking for it, what we plan to do with it, and why they should think about becoming invested in it. And we go on the road. We go to each school committee, we go to each town, each select meeting, we go to the parents. Anybody who will listen, we'll have it after school at the high school for the teachers, the staff and the faculty, people who don't live in town, come, this is, this is what we're asking for. And really explain it to them. Because that's transparency. We have nothing to hide. And if we come up with the best, the most meaningful, the most concrete justification for where we want to go, and what our goals are, then we have to trust that the voters will understand it as well.
I guess that would be me.
That would be you.
How would you describe your leadership style, and what particular strengths do you believe you will bring through high school system?
Well, I, I kind of ascribe to Mike Schmoker, and I don't know if you know who he is, but he, he writes about, he wrote, he wrote a book called Focus, and Focus in Educational Settings. And really what it's about is clarity, simplicity, and priorities. So instead of coming in with a bunch of, you know, with an agenda, or a bunch of initiatives, or a bunch of ideas, the idea is to come and really immerse myself in the district, in the traditions of each town, get to know the people, get to understand. And I have to tell you, these are easy people to get to know. These are easy people. They're just so welcoming. They're so kind and welcoming. And to, to really listen, and then collaborate, collaborate with my team, my cabinet, which again, is the business director, the business administrator, the sped director, the curriculum, the principals, these are all people that are going to work, work with the superintendent to make the district, I mean, they all, each and everyone comes with a different perspective. And you bring that to the table. And then you come and you communicate with your boards. And you're very, you have to be honest. So when I talk about strengths, it's, I like to streamline processes, make things not as cumbersome, very straightforward, focus on one or two things, you know, really find out what, what is the most important issue that we're working on, what we're working with, with these schools, with the districts, with each different school. And then just kind of have clarity around that. What's the action? What are the action steps? What are we going to do? And move forward from there. You cannot do a lot of things all at once. And you cannot move too fast. You cannot use the word change without being able to substitute the word opportunity in the same sentence. So when we use the word change, what we're really talking about is an opportunity. And I'm not all about making change just for change's sake. That's, that's not what we're here for. The state is helping, the state is asking an awful lot as it is. And the state is coming up with new and exciting things just about every day that we need to be considering. Right now, sometimes I think it's just good to sit back and say, okay, we're going to do this and this because the state's requiring it. But then get focus groups, get people together to say, well, this is something we want to look at. The answers and the ideas are not all about me. I think that I have a great perspective because I've been in other districts and I've seen other things. And every time I move to a different district, I can say, I've seen this, I've seen that, I've seen this. And I have been able to bring my knowledge and my background with me, and have been able to make some positive changes, or opportunities, bring new opportunities. But this isn't about me. This is about the students, the children of the Frontier Union 38 District. It's not about me. It's about what the 27 of you want, as well as the parents, and the, the state, and my cabinet. So that's really what, what it's about. Those are my strengths, is working with people and understanding it's not about me. If I, if I make a mistake, or I say, you know, if I say, well, maybe we could do this, and they say, no, that won't work, fine. You know, help me understand why, and we just try something else. I'm not afraid to, to adjust and be flexible as you're moving along. Thank you. Bill Merrickson?
So I feel like this, these questions are actually evolving into a good organic conversation. My question is, how have you involved your staff in the decision-making process? And describe how you would manage effective communications with your staff.
I, again, I'm not a, like, I don't want you to think like I'm this big meeting person. But I do have to tell you, if you're sitting down at a table with your cabinet, and you're talking about what's impacting your students, and your students, and your students around the district, you know, each principal comes with a different set of things going on. The special ed department, very important, a lot of things happening there. The business, I mean, sitting down and collaborating and communicating, and choosing from that, all of that stuff about how we're going to address this, this, or this. Eventually, and not, and not to, it doesn't take too long for the most important things, the most salient things to bubble up to the top. And those, of course, are the first ones we address. I do think that it's important to be out in the schools and visit the schools, but I know it's hard. I can tell you it's hard for me. I have five elementary schools now, and they do, they love to see me. You know, if I get there once every three weeks, it's, it's a good thing. It depends on, you know, what it is, what's going on, and how you prioritize what's happening. I think it's important to, if a principal invites me as a superintendent to come to a staff meeting, I would certainly be there. I, I really like visuals, so when I go, I have PowerPoints, and I say, well, we're looking at this. I think inviting them, a meeting with them and talk about what we're looking at with the budget is always a big one. But what about other things? You know, what's happening in curriculum? What's happening, you know, what are we doing here? Or what do you think, you know, whatever. How about just asking me some questions? I think that being available and being approachable is important. I answer every email I get now. Takes a long time, but I do. And I think people are comfortable knowing that I'm going to be there if they email me, or if they ask me. Do I always say yes? No. And you can't. And every once in a while, when you say no, people don't like it. They just, they, they're offended and they're angry. Even whenever I say no, I always say it in a very nice way, and I always justify why I'm saying no. But, you know, you can't please everybody all the time. But you certainly can communicate with them. And again, I talk about a superintendent's blog, just putting that out there on the web, you know, on the webpage, so that everybody knows what's going on with you, and what you're looking at in any particular week. People want transparency. They just want to know what's, what's going on. And you need to tell them. David?
Is not here.
Is not here. Any other Davids out there?
Okay.
So I can take this question.
Thank you.
Can you describe your philosophy and experience in working with special education programs, laws, policies, and budgets? Sure. Special education is, I work really closely with the special education director that I actually, in the district I'm at now. And I am a certified special ed administrator in the state of New Hampshire. I have always, as a principal, as a guidance counselor, and all my, special ed is a big piece of what, what you do as an administrator. You have to have a really strong understanding of the IDEA, the laws. But each state, even though it's federal, it's a federal law, each state has their own procedures that they put in place. And you need to understand the deadlines. When a child, you know, when a parent or somebody requests a child be, you know, have some kind of testing, for whatever reason, you have to dispose of that right away, within a certain amount of days. And then, you know, the, the group meets, and are we going to test? What are we going to do? Then... Then you meet and you discuss the results of the testing, and should the child be coded or not? And once the child's coded, what are we going to do to help that child reach, you know, have the same opportunity for education that other children do? So the laws and the policies are pretty clear. They're, especially with special ed, they're kind of, you know, the state kind of tells you exactly what you need to be doing. We have, in New Hampshire, we have a program that's available, that is used by all students who are in the special ed system. And it's a computer program, and each district has their own, you know, account. And so every child is listed, and it's available to the state, it's available to everyone, you know, to the case managers. One of the things, when we talk about budgets, is out of district placement. That's very expensive. One of the things I was thrilled when I came here is that there's three wonderful programs that are happening in each of the different schools, where they're keeping the students in district, with their peers, and near their homes. And that's really, not only is it the best thing for the students, but it's really cost-effective. And when we talk about budgets, the, that's one of the biggest things we need to worry about. Because some children do have identifications or codings that we can't, we just can't handle within the district, and we need to find the right placement for them. So one of the things that we have been working at, that I have been working on in the district I'm at, is an RTI program where we have interventionists, we have Title I people, and we also have special ed teachers and case managers. And we kind of all work together, depending on the level of need for the children. So it doesn't matter if a special ed child needs a double dose of literacy intervention. It doesn't matter who's giving that to the child, because we're all kind of, you know, we're all qualified, highly qualified teachers. And so we're trying to kind of blend that where they're our children, they're not special ed kids, they're all of our kids. And we're all working together to improve the outcomes for these children.
Carl?
So Dave Sharp is stuck in the elevator as well.
Many stories will come from this.
Yes.
Carl?
Hello, Lynn.
Oh, hi.
Would you please share your thoughts relative to some of the hot topics in public education today?
Well, you know, the hottest is, of course, MCAS II, and PRC, and all of those. And now, I want to say, I understand that we do it, and that Massachusetts, of course, is always ranked so high based on these tests, and that's a wonderful thing. I am not 100% in favor of teaching to the tests, or to the MCAS, to the PRC, you know, whatever the blending will be. I do think we need to provide the students with the tools to be able to, you know, to be able to attack the test with, you know, some sense of knowledge and security. I know that this is a Level 2 district, and that's wonderful. It'd be even greater if, you know, we were Level 1. But Level 2, I just try not to get too crazy about the test, and the Common Core, and all these things. Because my feeling is, a lot of these things are going to balance themselves out. Right now, we're transitioning, and it's hard, and, you know, things are up in the air, and how's it going to all, in the end, mesh? I prefer to wait until things balance out. One of the things that happened in New Hampshire is, they went to S-Back, and it's all computerized, and that went well. But then they decided, not even after a year, that they weren't going to do S-Back in grade 11, they're just going to look at college board SAT scores. So everybody in grade 11 takes an SAT test, instead of the S-Back. And K to A, you know, the test is much more rigorous than what our state tested, the NECA, which is five-state consortium that we were testing under. But what I found out is that because the test was so rigorous, everybody, you know, took kind of a step down. So that even though it was harder for the kids, and they didn't do as well in meeting proficiency, everybody kind of went down too. So it's kind of like the ratio is still there. So, but I try not to get too, you know, too angst about it. It is what we do, and it's necessary to do, and the Common Core is here, and, you know, we have ESSA now, and so we're just going to wait till all of it kind of sugars off.
Mary?
Hi, Lynn. How will you keep your school committee informed? In particular, what is your strategy around issues that are your responsibility, but where the school committee may have an interest? So, for example, in our state, we really are responsible for just budget, policy, hiring of the superintendent, but may have interests and concerns in other areas of the daily happenings in the school. How would you inform us of that?
You know, I like to talk, and I like to share. And being a superintendent, you also want to share, you want to share the good things, but you also kind of want to share the burdens a little bit, too. And I do, I like to communicate. I do like to inform people and let them know what's going on. I think the board is integral to the community. I think they're the conduit to the community. The community elects the people to be on the board, and I really want to have a really strong relationship with each of the boards. This is quite a group, but, you know, I think the boards are a little bit smaller.
They're quite impressive.
And it is, it's intimidating a little bit.
Just a smidge.
But I think that, I think that I really want to connect with each of the boards, and really understand what they're hearing, and what they're feeling, and what they're thinking. And, but also, too, to be able to say, I really understand that, let's see what we can do, or I really understand it, let me help you understand why it has to, you know. So that communication is so important, and I really think you need to have a strong relationship with your board, your boards, and definitely a connection. You can't, again, it's not about me. It's not about me. The boards are here for the kids. The teachers are here for the kids. The kids are here because this is the best place to be. And it's, as a superintendent, it's really about the kids. It's about the kids, and how are we going to facilitate that? And there's so many layers. You've got your IAs, you've got your teachers, then, you know, you've got your principals, and then you've got your cabinet, the people in the central office with you, and you've got your boards. But I think, you know, unless it's truly, truly confidential about personnel or something, I would really want to communicate. I think that kind of communication is so refreshing.
All right. As the new superintendent, please describe your actions, plans, and goals for the first 100 days, and then expand into the first six months of your tenure.
I, again, I'm sorry if you've heard this before, because I keep saying the same thing. I would actually like to, again, connect with everybody. Literally. I know it sounds crazy, but I would like to connect with people, just ask them three simple questions, and just keep a tally. I don't want it on Google Docs, or Google Forms, or survey. I want to meet people. Anyone who wants to meet me, the open invitation on the website. Three questions. What makes Frontier and Union 38 so great? And what is, you know, maybe one or two things, preferably one thing, that you would really, you know, if you could change, if you were the superintendent, what would you look at? And then, number three, what do you want from me as a superintendent? What do you think, you know, what would you like to see me do? And I would take that, and I would take all of those responses and analyze them, not unlike what they did with the survey for who you're looking for, for a superintendent, but now knowing who the superintendent is, making those decisions. And then come to the boards with a 30, a 60, and a 90-day plan. And then I would come with a 100-day plan on top of that, for the next 10 days. So when I say to you, I don't have an agenda, or a plan, or I don't have, I don't have any preconceived agendas coming into this. It's really to continue the great work that's already going on. I was so impressed when I met your current superintendent, Marty, and she was so generous. I asked her, you know, can I call you? And she was like, oh, yeah, that's fine, sure.
She lives across the street.
I know.
She shovels snow, too.
That's such a great feeling, because I think that the knowledge that she has is going to be so helpful. And again, she's still a constituent. She's living, you know, she's part of the community. She's been here forever. She's, you know, has a long, long history. When I talk about what I'm coming in for and what my plans are, it's really to do what the board needs me to do, to do what the principals need, to do what the community needs. I don't have any master plan. I don't. I will tell you two things. I assimilate incredibly quickly. It would be, I think you'd be surprised to see how quickly I become a part of what's going on, and how quickly people get used to me. I kind of grow on people really quickly. And I am very flexible, and I'm also, believe it or not, I am easygoing. I have carried a big stick, though, and that's the God's honest truth, and I have. And there will be people that will tell you. Other things that I think you should know, I'm just, poor Cindy.
You're just, like, jumping right into my, so that completes our questions, too. Please take the next few minutes to continue your closing statement, and please feel free to ask any questions of us.
Thank you. I, and forgive me if you've heard this before, because I think some of you have. I aspire to be a great leader, and I was told once, a great leader, 1/3 of your people love you. They just love you. And 1/3 are going to hate you no matter what. They're just going to hate you. They probably hate a lot of things, and you're one of them. And 1/3 will just be on the fence, given on any, you know, any issue, you know, if you're doing what they really want, or if your decision, or the good of the community says, no, you know, we're going to go a different way. So they're just on the fence. So it's hard. It's hard to be beloved by all, and I know that. But that doesn't mean I don't try, that I don't try to meet everyone's needs. One of the things I wanted to tell you, and again, if you've heard it before, I'm really sorry, but I didn't, when I came and interviewed several weeks ago now, not that long ago, but there were people that I interviewed with, I did not read what the results of the survey was, the survey of what the people wanted for their superintendent, or Pat's summary of that. I deliberately didn't read any of that. I did read up on the schools, and I mistook this gentleman here for Baby Grace's father, and then got here now, so I just totally made a mistake on that one, sorry. But when I came and interviewed, I just wanted to be myself. I wanted to be, because if I'm somebody different when I'm interviewing, and then when, you know, I get here, and then you're like, well, that's not what we bought, we didn't, you know, that's not what we ordered, we didn't want that. So I didn't read anything of what your expectations were. I came in, and I just kind of talked about what I've done in my years of experience. And then when I read it on Saturday, I was really surprised. I was really happy, because a lot of what they're looking for is a lot of what... Hi there. Hi. Sorry. Oh, that's fine. You're going to get that in the mail tomorrow. I told you to get it Thursday.
We were trying to test your emergency, you know.
Yes.
She was going to climb up that for you.
Yeah, I wanted to climb up, like they do on TV, you know, that's so exciting.
Please continue.
Yeah, well, I think, am I running out of time?
We're... No, you've got five minutes.
Oh, well, so those are the things, though. I did not read those statements from the community, or the parents, or the board, or, because I really wanted to be the person I am. And I was thrilled when I got a call to come back, when I was asked to come back and, you know, visit, or when they, when I got the call, that they came to visit, and all those other pieces that fell into place. And I guess that's what it is. That's, you have to be genuine. I really want to be an authentic, genuine person. I can't be somebody else. I don't have an agenda coming in, and my impressions of the town and the community are, this is, working here would be not only an honor, but a wonderful, wonderful experience for all of us, I think. I think I could, I do think I could bring a lot. I'm always open, I'm always growing, and I want to grow with Frontier. I do understand the traditions, I understand that every school has their own flavor, and I understand that my job is to fit in and assimilate with you. So I think that's, I think that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
We're going to take a few minutes.
Don't touch the elevator.
I didn't know if they were supposed to happen up there.
Oh.
I just...
People want to stretch their legs for a couple minutes, please feel free.
All right.
Oh, my.[1645.33]
Oh, my.
Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now.
I think it was difficult to be the superintendent.
People want to stretch their legs for a couple minutes, please feel free.
All right. Thank you. Thank you so much.
We're gonna take a few minutes.
Wait, don't forget to call. Thanks.
They're terrible.
Don't touch the elevator. No. I didn't know that was supposed to happen after.
Oh.
I just-
We talked about the whole people chill, but we didn't talk about why.
I think it was difficult to be the superintendent.
People want to stretch their legs for a couple minutes, please feel free.
All right. Thank you. Oh, my. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now. Don't touch the elevator now. Pat, you gotta budget some money to pick the elevator now.[798.31]
And I'm going to turn it over to Ken, the Chair.
Okay.
And you can follow along.
Thank you.
Well, we'd like to welcome you again to Frontier Regional Union Thirty-Eight. It's been a little over twenty-four hours, I think, since we were last in this building. We'll start by having the committee introduce themselves. We'll go around the table for you.
Super, thank you.
Doug Fulton from Sunderland.
Phil Cantor from Conway and Frontier.
Phil Mayer, PC from Frontier.
Lynn Roberts from Frontier.
Trevor McDaniel, Deerfield Elementary.
Logan Dave Sharp from Deerfield Elementary.
Craig Gachalk, Sunderland.
Daisy Sharp, Sunderland.
Hi.
Amy Smithler, Deerfield Elementary.
Hi, Ruben, Conway Grammar.
Hi.
Chief of Parlor, Sunderland and Frontier.
Michelle Tomlinson, Sunderland.
Jan Warner, Conway.
Carol Anderson, Conway.
Hi.
Katie Edwards, Whately Elementary.
Don Skorowski, Whately.
Elaine Campbell, Conway Grammar.
Mary Raymond, Deerfield and Frontier.
Alan Wood, Frontier.
Bob Dickert, Frontier.
Bob Hallow from Whately and Frontier.
Cidiu Matt, and I'm Chair of the Frontier Regional School Committee.
And I'm Ken Cutterback, Chair of the Deerfield Elementary Committee and Chair of the Union Committee.
Thank you all for having me here, I appreciate it.
Well, tonight, we've got a format that will consist of three parts. We will start by inviting you to make an opening statement.
Okay.
And then we have a series of ten questions that will be asked by various members around the table. And then we'll have you, afford you the opportunity to sum things up and provide us with your final thoughts.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. I want to thank everybody for coming. Am I loud enough? Some that I've met before, it's nice to see you, and others, it's nice to meet you. My name is Kate Clark, and I'm a thirty-year veteran of Massachusetts public schools. I started teaching actually thirty years ago this year. I think many of you have heard this already. And I'm very honored to be here. I began to think about searching for superintendent's position earlier this year, and did a lot of research, and honestly have only applied for superintendent position here in this district. It was very interesting to me to see the way, or very exciting to me to see the way that you all spoke about children, and empowering the children, and empowering our students, empowering the teachers. And so I applied, and now here I am, and I'm, as I said, I'm honored to be here. I'm very excited for this opportunity to speak to you all. My career has consisted of seventeen years as a teacher. I have taught in almost every grade level. As a special education teacher, I've taught my own classes, as well as co-taught in everything from Spanish to chemistry to World Civ to first grade, no, maybe second grade. I have also taught reading and skills to kids. I've taught content area to high school students. About thirteen years ago, fourteen years ago, I decided to become an administrator, and became a special ed in-school administrator at the high school level, and then at the middle school level. So the longest stint there was seven years as an administrator in Andover Public Schools for one of their middle schools. There's three in the town, so I was at the one right down the street from Philip's Andover. And then I went on to become a principal of a lovely elementary school in Danvers, Massachusetts, which I did for three years. With the support of my family, I decided to, after doing my, finishing my three years there, to reassess. And took a position in a for-profit company, which has been very exciting, very different. I'm now in charge of over a thousand children, three hundred staff members, and eight what we call direct reports, but they could be akin to principals, I suppose, across the eastern seaboard, in thirty-six different schools for before and after-care program that's based in Lexington. And there, it's actually, interestingly enough, the job that spurred me to think about being a superintendent, because I learned things about myself, things that I like to do, and things that I'm good at, that have to do, that correlate to, and I'm sure that, we'll talk more about that, but correlate to a superintendency. So, and that's, again, what brought me here. I have met everyone, or not everyone, but I went to each school, met lots of people yesterday, which was a tremendous opportunity, to see your beautiful schools, talk to the kids, talk to the teachers. I was very impressed. Your children are very well-spoken, which is quite a feather in your cap. And they were very articulate about how many opportunities there are for everybody here in this district. And that's impressive to me. So I'm excited to get started, and to talk more, and see if this is a match.
Excellent. So if you open this, this will give you a question, so that you can follow along, just in case somebody didn't see it.
Thank you. You're going to start with Don?
Hi, Kate. Please give examples of quality programs and/or educational policies you have implemented in another school district. Can you give us examples of programs that were not successful, and describe the course of action you took as a result?
Sure. So, I know, when I speak about this, for me, it's more, sometimes programs are narrow. So, for me, it's more about philosophies that I've seen work, and I'll talk about programs for sure, but, for example, when we talk about equity for all children, and we look at universal design for learning, which is a very broad philosophy on creating opportunities for all kids to reach their potential and beyond. In my school improvement plan for the two years prior to this one, in the elementary school, we worked on unpacking, there's three principles of universal design for learning, and the company cast.org, which is in Watertown, I think, Massachusetts, has a wonderful website with lots of resources for, and as a community, we explored ways to have, to present information so that there were many access points for all kids, and then ways to have the children show us what they know, that might be a little bit different than maybe traditionally expected, depending on the needs and the passions and the interests of the students. That was a very rewarding experience. The teachers and I did a lot of work figuring out how to implement universal design for learning, and how to make sure that we were taking data, to make sure that things were actually working well for kids. Another, excuse me, program or philosophy lately, I know many of the teachers have had to, and I had to, take classes in sheltered English immersion course by the state we were required. And that really opened up for, again, at the same elementary school where I was, a conversation for us about robust vocabulary development. So really looking at building student vocabulary in a way that was meaningful, in a way that helped students to really own the information, and own new words, make those connections. One of the things that we saw, as we did our analysis every year of our scores in the state standards, and also on district-based measurements, we saw that kids would trip over, and this was all students, would trip over words that had multiple meanings. One of the words that comes to mind right away is the word "draw." So they, now I can't remember exactly the sentence, of course, but on the MCAS, a couple of years ago, they asked, I think it was draw conclusion, it was draw conclusion. And the students couldn't figure out how they were supposed to make a picture of a conclusion. And they were really tripped up by that. So these multiple-meaning words are a very important place to start with, not just kids who have English language learner needs, although it trips up, are students who need to learn English as a second language, but also many students. So we did a lot of exploration of ways to teach vocabulary and build student vocabularies, a very important work that we were doing, and it was very successful. Some programs that I've seen that are not successful, I mean, I could talk about more successful programs, but I will tell you that sometimes, you know, when I was a special education director in the middle school in Andover, we got kind of stuck in a Wilson reading rut, where we were using Wilson, which is a great program, not, you know, for the kids that it's great for. But we needed to, we sort of were banging our heads against the same, you know, giving students the same program, and this is back to what I was saying about, programs are wonderful unless they don't, unless they're not. So, you know, we had to really look into alternate ways of teaching reading for some kids. And we explored Lyndon Bell, we explored RAVO, we explored other reading approaches, and were able to move beyond that. But it took a little bit of, you know, not having success with it, to really move off of that program. So, I hope that answers your question.
Good, thank you.
Judy?
How have you worked with town governments, parents, and the community at large to generate more trust for our students?
Thank you. I have worked with town government, worked in my own town government, I've been on the board at my own, my town up in New Hampshire, also on the Education Foundation in that town, volunteered in the Wellness Committee. Also, as a principal, I worked very closely with the town, well, obviously, the school committee, and the Chief of Police, Chief of Fire, we were all, we worked very closely together, and it was very productive. It was a wonderful partnership that we built with particularly the local police officers came by the school a lot, they were, some of them were parents. So we, sometimes we needed their help with things, but more often than not, it was just sort of to make sure that we were building that relationship and working together. Parents, I mean, I've had my own PACs and CPAC to work with, but to me, the best way to do it, is that part of the question, generating trust, thank you, is to make myself accessible. I had coffees, I, obviously was at every meeting, and every after-school activity, every opportunity to get to know the kids, to get to know the parents. To me, I feel, and I've said this before, so pardon me, but there's a lot of preventative work, I think, that needs to be done, in order to prevent things going awry. So that means really pounding the pavement in terms of getting to know people, learning about their children, and their lives and their priorities, and that's, I think, is a very important piece of the work we do, all of us, as educators. Lynn?
What do you believe is the role of superintendent in the areas of curriculum, instruction, and technology? And can you describe your previous experience in these areas?
Sure, sure. I'll start with my experience, and I'll start maybe most recently, in my role as, actually in my role, my current role, I'm, we have a curriculum director, we write the curriculum for the teachers to use in our after-school program. I help to write that curriculum, I help to vet that curriculum, I help to research. I also then make sure it gets implemented in the classrooms in a way that is in keeping with our expectations. As a principal, it was my responsibility to, in addition to the district-wide PD, it was my responsibility to run professional development in the school, obviously to go into classrooms, to talk to teachers, to coach teachers as they implemented the curriculum. I was part of curriculum initiatives in every district I've worked in, in terms of bringing in new curriculum. As a special educator, it's my job to back the curriculum, and then sort of maybe put things together a little differently, so that all, there's greater access sometimes for students. You said something else that made me think, oh, and technology would be, was very similar. In my last position, I increased, I want to say a hundred percent, just about, the technology in the building. We did not have smart boards in every room, at the time I left, we did, we had a brand-new computer lab. We did it, though, mindfully, and that's something that I believe is very important. So when I first arrived, there was this push, they were collecting money to buy iPad carts, and they wanted thousands of dollars, and the parents were all on board, and then we had a conversation and realized that iPads really wouldn't have been very helpful, we only had half of the rooms with the smart boards that would have talked to the iPads, and then the rest of the wireless was not, we weren't wireless throughout the whole building, and it just, you know, didn't make a whole lot of sense. So we backed up and went forward with some different initiatives that made a little bit more sense, like getting the entire building wireless accessible. I have worked with specialists, so I've worked with the IT folks at great length, but also with specialists around assistive technology, and ways to provide, again, provide all students with access. And I believe the role of superintendent is to provide the leadership, and the vision, and the goals, and to make sure that decisions that are made are made with those priorities in mind all the time. So what are our goals for the technology? What is the, what is the technology, how is the technology going to get us toward whatever it is we're all, we've all decided we're working toward? Same with curriculum and instruction. There's lots and lots of really great research out there now about how to provide really effective instruction for students. And again, we just, I'm not opposed, and I'm not one that's tied to a program, or tied to a way of doing things, but it's got to be what's going to bring us to that next level. It's got to be research-based, we have to know that it's going to bring us to that next level, and then we have to keep checking to make sure. And that's my role, is to say, okay, here's the goal, this might get us there, let's say, let's vet it, it's research-based, and then tell me, folks, how is it getting us there? Show me the data that tells us it's getting there, and constantly going through that cycle. Phil?
I want to turn now to budgets. And if you could describe, describe the steps that you're going to take to build school budgets, and to advocate for those school budgets. And if you could sort of describe that in the context of the continuum of budgetary philosophy.
Right.
Where the one end is the institutional, where the budget is determined within the institution, and we seek to persuade the world outside, and the school outdoors, to adopt our budget. And the other end is the political, where we receive from the select board or the political entity what the dollar amount that they're willing to spend is, and we then impose that on our school community. So if you could sort of place yourself within that.
Absolutely. The first thing I'd do, and I've been thinking about this a lot, is unpack, where's Patty? Sit with Patty, and unpack what the budget is, what are those, where is the money going? And then to look at really deeply what that money is doing, and how it's moving us toward those priorities that we talked about. So if we talk about student outcomes, then for me, I'd have to take a good, long look at everything, and talk to folks about how and why this money is being spent, and how that's going to take us, move our students forward. The budget cycle, you know, things begin in October, where we begin to get input from the schools as to what's needed, we begin to shape, along with the goals and the priorities that the district has set, to decide, you know, how to spend that money. So there is obviously a cycle to that, and that's, I lost my train of thought, I'm so Phil, you called it, I know, I know, I know what I'm talking, but you mentioned political, what was the other piece? The institutional, thank you, I'm so sorry, I completely. So that's the institutional side of things, you know, making sure that we set priorities, and then our budget, line item by line item, if we have to, matches, matches that, those priorities. And then, for me, the piece about getting that to the community is about, is about communication, and about a lot of communication, and about transparency, and about making sure that people understand where the money is being spent, and why it needs to be spent in the way that it does. And I don't mean doing that maybe just around March and April, when things start to heat up and it's time to vote. You know, really to take that whole process and say, you know, in October, here's what we're talking about, this is what we're doing, these are the priorities we've decided upon, here is how we think we're going to move forward with that, and sort of make, and make sure that people understand why it is that we are making the choices that we're making, that we're going to bring to the table. You know, and I do understand that it may not be what the community decides upon. And then I would say to you that, again, as I said when I first met you, I am here to serve the community. So if the community has different ideas, and things don't get voted in, then it's my job to figure out how to make that work. I think I told you the story in New Hampshire of the gentleman who wanted to cut four million dollars from our budget, and you can do that at a deliberative session, you can just stand up and say, we're all going to vote on cutting, and he just liked the number four million. We would have had to have, you know, in the end, we would have had to have dealt with that, and that's the will of the community. My role is a service, is to be a service, of service, excuse me, to the community in the end. I mean, I'm going to do the best I can to lay out the very best options, and to explain why. But in the end, then it's time to go back and figure out how to do the best we can with what we've got. Always focused on what's best for the kids. Ken?
Yes. Question number one.
How would you describe your leadership style, and what particular strengths do you believe you are bringing to our school system?
My leadership style is, I like to think I'm very approachable, I'm very invested, and I'm a most strong believer in the value of gathering really smart people around me that do a really good job. I have been an educator since the moment, I mean, I went to college to be a teacher. I very much believe in public education. I see what we do as vital to the community, vital to the well-being of the students, and then the community, and the country at large. I mean, I really think that public education has enormous responsibility to keeping our country going, and we have a responsibility to create productive citizens who are going to make the world a better place. And that drives me. That drives me to be inclusive, to hear all voices. I do like to think out of the box, so I like to hear from a lot of different people, I don't mind new ideas. I do think we need to make sure that new ideas are vetted, researched, and then checked again, that monitoring at all times. I think for strengths, I have grown up with this state in terms of the varying regulations and ways we've implemented federal mandates. I began working in this state pre-MCAS, pre-1993, Ed Reform. So I have, I'm kind of long in the tooth that way, I don't understand where things, where certain initiatives come from. I also think that I have a strength in that I am very varied in my experience and my knowledge of different things. I had some great co-teachers in high school, I'm really good at writing now, and science, maybe not chemistry, but, you know, those other things that I was co-teaching. I have a wide interest in the world, in science, in music, and I think, I had a friend call me tonight, who I understand has family here who are still in the schools, but she said something to me that really resonated. She said that people in the arts, those of you who were there last night, I'm a bit of a musician, I've run a children's theater program outside of my day job as a teacher for many years, and she said, people in the arts are great leaders, they're holistic thinkers, and I think that's true of me. I don't know if it's because of my arts background, but I like to think holistically, I like to think about how we can work as a group, and how we can make sure that children have a wide variety of opportunities, and we can expand on their passions and interests. Phil?
Hi, Kate.
Hi.
So how have you involved your staff in the decision-making processes? And can you describe how you would manage effective communication with your staff?
Sure. Actually, I'm very proud of the work that I did. My professional practice goal a few years ago was to increase the shared responsibility around professional development with my staff. We had a monthly professional development time where, excuse me, where the parents would actually, and this, I cannot take credit for this, this was seventeen years solid, this practice, but the parents would take over the building once a month, there would be an enrichment, usually some, you know, someone would come and do music or something like that with the students, and we would go downstairs and shut the door for two and a half hours, and work together on our goals. And it was called Faculty Forum, it is called Faculty Forum, it's still going on. And I, when it first started, it was very teacher-run, and then it sort of, between principals, became more of a principal-run, close to the vesting, so I opened it up again to the teachers. I only guided what they, what they spoke about, because I was the connection, the conduit to what was going on in the superintendent and strategic plan. But, so if we were working on vocabulary development or something like that, that was me saying, okay, we need to look at that. But then they did all the planning, I might, I mean, I helped, because I love professional development, so I might have given them things to do, or made suggestions, but I forget the numbers, I think it was something like, I did the numbers because it was my professional development plan, my personal plan, so, personal goal, so it was something like seventy percent of it was, or sixty-five percent of it was run by the teachers when I started, and ninety-two percent was run by the teachers when I finished that year. So that is a particular passion of mine. Research shows very clearly that an efficacious group of people who believe in each other, and believe in themselves, and have trust in their administrators, do really good work for students. So I got the feeling here, the teachers are empowered to do their very best, and trusted, and they spoke loudly, loud and clear about their trust of the administration yesterday, and I just, I'm very impressed. It's not an easy thing to do, and it's clear in this community. Was that the rest, is there more? Oh, communication. I will be out in the schools, if I'm lucky enough to be chosen for this position. The whole, one of the reasons I wanted to apply, it was because I wanted to get back with the current position that I'm in, I get to see kids, but not as much, and it's thirty-six sites, I don't get to know them, I don't get to know the families, I miss that. That is something that I had strong relationships with parents and kids in my last, all my last jobs, and I do miss that. So I'll be out in the schools, I do, we talked a little- So I'll be out in the schools, I, I do, we talked a little bit about an online presence yesterday, I like to blog, I like to, I think that helps you to get to know me, but also helps kind of explain, as we're talking about these things, explain why we're doing certain So I, I would like to have a, you know, a pretty robust online presence. There'll be, there'll be coffees, there'll be meetings, there'll be me going to professional development, there'll definitely be an open door for staff and parents.
Thank you.
David?
Thanks. Can you describe your philosophy and experience in working with special education programs, laws, policies, and of course budgets?
Yes, sure, of course. The, I think the special education laws are written on my brain, you know, the regulations I lived with for a very long time, including the changes. I am a strong believer, and I, I felt it as I walked around this district, that in terms of policies, you can make all the policies you want, but the philosophical understanding of, of the rights of all children to be included is extremely important, and it was pretty palpable as I, as I, as I traveled around yesterday. I do believe that there's always room for capacity building, I think this is one area that research has shown, and studies that I've seen, and also in surveys, but in places where I've worked in the past, there's always a little bit of tension about being, teachers being worried that they don't know enough, because there's a lot to know about special ed, there's, you know, this broad range of, of disabilities and understandings of treatments and, and procedures and ways to move forward. So I, I do think that it's always wise to continually build capacity around understanding special needs, and I have built programs, in-house programs, to, you know, to take the district's, our low, our low estimate was $200,000 a year in just one program because of students who didn't go out to private, private, private schools for their language learning disabilities. And I know that if here you, you have that same philosophy, which I think is, is very impressive, and tell us, you know, that tuitioning in of some students, which is hard to do, and, and lots of people talk about it, it doesn't always get done, so that was good to see as well. Tara? Hi.
Can you share your thoughts relative to some of the hot topics of education?
Gosh, I remember this question from the last time we've been together. I know, what did I say? I think I said something about testing, which we talked about, a little bit about last night, you know, testing is obviously a hot topic, and, and we are being asked, the state mandated testing has been in place now for 20 years, and it's changing, is it going to be the park, is it going to be MCAS 2? And my answer, whoops, excuse me, was the same as it was last night, that I think good teaching is a match for any test that the state hands down to us. I do believe firmly in, in enriching students' lives through real, robust experiences, science experiences, deep understanding of nonfiction and fiction texts, vocabulary development, I think all of that answers those, the, the question of what do we do about testing? Because it is something we need to live with. And I do think, also in terms of that hot topic, that we need to be, we need to assess where students are, I'm a strong believer in the data process and making sure that we have data to prove that what we're doing is, is the right thing for kids, but we also need to balance how much, how many assessments we give students and how we, how many times they're sitting in front of a test with paper and pencil, because I've seen that being too much as well, and that causes a lot of anxiety, and we talked a little bit about that last night at the forum here. The other hot topic that I don't think I mentioned last time, and I, I think a lot about, and I, I've worked with, closely with many professionals in my career, is social emotional learning. Now, I'm not going to remember who said it, I wish I, I had it written down, but, you know, someone smarter than me said, you've got to take care of the Maslow before you can take care of the Bloom. You've got to make sure that children are able, when they come to the table, to give their all and learn, and that they feel safe and comfortable and cared for. And that wraps in bullying, anti-bullying efforts, it wraps in students who need maybe more support for emotional difficulties, but it also is about just the culture and quality of the educational experience that students get. I mentioned this, I'm not sure to whom now, but when I was walking through the buildings, they were very, there was lots of exciting learning going on, but the buildings were orderly, and to me, it was just wonderful to see because although we want the kids to be creative and excited about learning, they also need structure, and there's, there's research around that orderly building and, and having those parameters in which they can create and have fun, and it was, it was very impressive to me yesterday to see these, these orderly, beautiful buildings with very engaged young students, and I think that's, that connects to social emotional learning. Kids need to feel, they need to know that they're safe, and then they can soar. Thank you. Mary?
Hey, how do you keep your school committee informed? In particular, what is your strategy around issues that are your responsibility, but things that we might be interested in? So since Ed Reform, we really only do policy, budget, hiring of the superintendent, but have an interest in many other things.
I, I, actually, one model that really, I thought worked very well, and I would emulate, was actually in Danvers. The school committee in Danvers is a lovely, wonderful group of people, and the principals and the superintendent always reported in. So we created our, you know, by law now, we, every, we need to, every school needs to create a school improvement plan, teachers need to create their, their educator, their goals, their, their professional practice goals and their, their student learning goals. We did a mid-year, mid-cycle report where we actually reported out how things were going on our, our school improvement plans very specifically, which kept the, and then, and then we did that again in June. We had a curriculum director would talk about our analysis of the data, talk about, you know, so we'd look at the metadata, looking at the, the MCAS, things like that, but also looking at, at the district-wide data, and in the beginning of the year, talk about what are we going to do to mitigate some of the issues that came up in the data, and then again, as I said, we'd check in, and then at the end, we talk about successes and what the goals are going forward. And I thought that was very effective. I think that it's always good to, to let people know what's going on, people, people tend to fill in blanks if you don't let them know what's happening. And I think also, I mean, and maybe this is just me, but I'm a learner, and I, I'm assuming everybody who works in education, and this could just be my assumption, wants to learn too. So I, I think we could learn together, I would be happy to share research and share best practices, and the other wonderful thing that I've seen in the past is to have students and staff share with the school committee, and that, that I hear happens here, and I, that's tremendous, tremendous way to, to see what's going on in the school, especially your kids are so particular, they're just great. Jameson?
As the new superintendent, please describe your actions, plans, and goals for the first of 100 days, and then further on for the first six months of Virginia.
Well, I truly believe that I would be remiss if I came in and said I was going to change things or make some kind of big statement, we're all going to do universal design for learning, or something like that, where I, I have those beliefs, but I, I fully understand that they need to be the beliefs of the community, they need to match the beliefs of the community. I can bring you expertise, but my first six months should really be about making sure I understand the community. So talking to people, understanding what goes on, why things go on, as I said, unpacking things like the budget, working with Louisa and Sarah on the curriculum and what, what is happening and why, understanding the history and honoring that history, honoring what's happened in the past and what's worked well and what's been working for this district, celebrating the, the present, the things that are happening, and then working to plan for the future. So after that six months, reporting again, saying, here's what I found, what I think, what I've heard, and having discussions with the school committee about what's, what is the next step, what, where do we want to go from, go from here, and how do we want to use what I can bring to the table as you've gotten to know me as well, sometime in, in January, or to discuss then executing a plan going forward. That would be what I would do. Okay, so that completes our questions for you. So if you'd like to take the next few minutes, ask us any questions and/or make a closing statement. Well, I, I think most of my questions were exhausted over the last, last day and a half. I had wonderful opportunities to talk again with staff and parents and students yesterday, people in the central office, people on the ground in the classrooms. And I, as I said yesterday, I feel like fit is very important. I do not want to dedicate my time and energy and expertise and life to a place where I would not fit, so I welcome you to, to make that same estimation, that's not the right word, but are we a fit? I, I would ask you to please think about that. I, I, I have a lot to give, I have a lot to share, I am very excited that you have brought me to this point in this, in this search. I'm honored. I do know that I would never ask anybody to do something that I haven't done myself. I roll up my sleeves, I work next to people, I'm excited to do that, I've been a teacher, I've been a principal, I've been a building-based special ed administrator, I've done a lot of the jobs out there, so I get it, and, and I've been on the school committee. If it works for us, if it is a match for us, I promise you, I will, I will roll up my sleeves and I will do my very best for you, for a good long time. I'm not interested in, in looking for a stepping stone or anything like that. As I said many times, I've researched this district, I've only applied to this district as a, as a superintendent, and so that's... Hopefully it'll work out. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mal, I hope to see you again so much. So at this point, we're going to take a 10-minute recess, but I was told that we have to do that by roll call, so we're just going to go out of it and then we'll come back into it, so for Frontier, Judy Pierce, William Smith, Keith McFarlane, Robert Decker, Phil Cantor, Mary Raymond, Robert Hala, Alan Lipp, Lynn Roberts, William Mera Pezy, and Cindy Womack. Yes. Ken?
We'll do the same roll call for the voting members. So Kenneth Cudback, yes, Jameson?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
James Moore? Waking up. Elaine?
Yes.
Ira?
Yes.
Sunderland Gregory?
Douglas?
Yes.
Keith? And Wheatley, Don?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Bob?
Okay, 10-minute recess. End stretch.
Okay, 10-minute recess. End stretch.[306.45]
Back from recess at seven forty-five with a roll call. Judy Pierce, William Smith, Keith McFarland, Robert Decker, Bill Cantor, Cindy Womet, yes, Mary Raymond, Bob Holla, Alan Lipp, Lynn Roberts, and William Marapisie.
And for the Union, we're coming back as well. Kenneth Cutterback, yes, Jamison, David, Janice, Elaine, Ira, Gregory, Douglas, Keith, Don, Katie, and Bob.
Yep.
Okay, so keeping in mind that this is the first time some of us have ever done this, and sadly for some of you, you've done it multiple times. So we've had to ask counsel, our counsel is here, Mr. Adam Dupere, I'm sorry, I slaughtered that, he's over there if we do need him, and we've asked Patty to sit up here to do certain notes. So what we thought we would do is just take a hand vote from everyone, a straw vote, and then we, depending on which person got the most votes, I would ask for a motion to entertain to hire that person, then there would be a second, and then we will have discussion. Okay, so we have to have a motion and a second to have any discussion. So all we need right now is a hand vote by everyone for Lynn Curry. If you would like the first person that we interviewed, Lynn, to be our superintendent, if you would raise your hand.
Both committees?
Both committees, everyone, just a straw vote. Only voting members, I apologize. Only voting members, so one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, I believe, seventeen. Okay, so seventeen, and I might have gotten that wrong, I might have counted them all. Okay, and for Kate Clark, those of you, one, two, three, four, okay, seventeen, four. Okay, so I will...
Can we hire for Assistant Superintendent?
Already asked about dual, and I was told no. So I will entertain a motion to offer the position of Superintendent of the Frontier Regional and Union Thirty-Eight Schools to Ms. Lynn Curry, and I'm asking if I'm saying that right. Carrie, sorry, Lynn Carey, pending successful contract negotiations. Could I have a second? So that is for Frontier.
And for the Union, I'll entertain a motion to offer the position of Superintendent of the Frontier Regional and Union Thirty-Eight Schools to Lynn Carey, pending successful contract negotiations. Do I have a second?
Second.
Don.
Discussion, please raise your hand and be recognized before any comments. Comments, Bill?
I'd just like to go back to something that Ms. Clark said, and her philosophical approach, and that also, that her desire as a leader is to be approachable, and to gather the really smart people around her. I just, I do believe that without further discussion on someone of her character, I didn't get that same feeling from Ms. Carey and her leadership style. So I just would like to have a discussion and see if there's anything further, if anyone else agrees with me.
I went on the site visit for Dr. Carey, and I would say her leadership style is very similar to that. People actually raved about her ability to build a team, ability to communicate, I mean, we heard repeatedly how smart she was, but also what a good team builder she was, and what a good listener she was. So I think she sort of said what you're saying because she immediately noticed the smart people we have already got here, and named them, you know, and so she doesn't have to gather smart people, they're already here. She just has to get the most out of them, which she did comment on, that she was aware of what we had here already, which I think is great, that she's noticed that in the little time, and when you're that caught up in things, she's really noticed the gems we have here. And I think she'll help them do their jobs even better, so.
Bill?
I picked up on that very same point for the exact same reason that Elaine is talking about, that I think, I think we are surrounded by very smart people now. And I'm really not looking for anybody to change the game, I'm looking for somebody to help me carry the ball. And I get that impression more from her than I do from the second candidate. I don't, I don't know what it is. One of the things that, it's very strange, that stood out to me was, none of this little circus sideshow didn't knock her off her game, not one inch. She just soldiered right through the whole thing, police, fire department people, elevator guy running in and out of here, we're laughing, we're clapping, didn't knock her off her game. And you know some of the junk, the administrators in the back are laughing, Karen and Sarah, some of the junk that you, the administrators have to go through. And if you guys can go through that without getting knocked off your game, you got my vote.
Hey, I was in there.
Nice setup, yeah. We also on the site visit, her own administrative assistant, which I love to hear from the person that works like right next to her all the time, was, you know, really devastated at the thought of losing her, but was like, has seen her interact with hundreds of people, you know, teachers, parents, you know, and said she is always calm, and always handles the situation, and makes the people, the person feel like their needs are being listened to and attended to. You remember that? You know, so I was like, that's, you know, because one of my issues, I think I've said is that she, I thought Lynn was like way too nice. I know that's my problem, but she was, I like, as a superintendent, you have to be nice, but you have to be strong, you know, and I was just worried that she was just way too nice at first. But from the day-long interviews, it seems like she, and she mentioned that, that she could carry a big stick. I mean, hopefully, we don't have a big need for big sticks around here, but she's had to do some tough jobs and did them well, so that was...
Thank you for the information from the site visit, too. I did not glean that from tonight, but...
Somebody else?
I don't know, but I think both are wonderful candidates. I was so excited to go on the site visit for Lynn, and I know I don't have a vote here. I was extremely blown away. It's the first time I've ever seen and met Kate, and I was completely blown away by her passion and her knowledge, and wow, I just, I mean, again, both very great, I think we're in great shape no matter what, but I was floored as soon as I, and I spent the day up there in New Hampshire, and I spent forty-five minutes listening to her, and I was blown away by Kate.
I agree.
I'm just, whoa.
Sounds good.
Somebody I could work with.
I would just like to take a second first, but to, we should all just take a step back and just acknowledge, you know, first of all, you know, we are the best school in this county. We deserve shiny new things, shiny new people. We deserve the excellence that both of these candidates represent to me. The search committee, we've done, I thought, done a great job. The two that are brought forward are just really impressive for different reasons. I've now been on, I've been on both site visits, I've had a chance to ask them both any question I can think of. I think that it's a lot closer than our straw vote indicated. I actually wish, if I'd have known this, I would have voted the other way, just to make it closer, because the other candidate deserved it to be close, no matter how it goes. The, they are, they offer different strengths, in my opinion, and the result of those differences, from our perspective, I think, is that one is more ready to go out of the box right now in this job, one is arguably better aligned or in poten, has the potential to be better aligned for a longer term of successful service. And that this really is a future versus present dichotomy. And both of those are extremely important kinds of things, and to decide which is really, which of those two kind of groupings of categories you prefer is a really difficult choice. And I think however, however it comes out, it's been a real pleasure to meet both of these ladies, and to have them as obviously interested in us as they both are. Feels good.
We thank you all for doing that, and, but tonight, right now, we have to make a decision. So we need to decide, even if it's those small differences that change it for us. We cannot hire dual, we've talked about that, we've talked about assistance, we need to separate now. So if you can separate and have comment, that would be much appreciated, but I think the entire group.
I'm going to try to do a little bit of advocacy and see if we can change a few votes here. I know it was a very dramatic tally there. I would certainly echo that we have two great candidates, and that that's a good thing to have. I would take some exception to the great comment here, that yes, we have great schools, and we have great staff, and all that kind of stuff, but I don't want to rest, I don't want this community to rest on their laurels. The sense that we need somebody to just sort of come in and, I don't know, I don't want to misstate you, and I know you meant it in a very positive way, but somebody to come in and sort of keep things running. I think we want somebody who is going to push us, inspire us, inspire the teachers who are doing the bulk of the work here for our community and our kids, and inspire the community as well to come around and support our schools and our teachers. And my suspicion is just that the second candidate would do that to a significantly greater degree. She's coming in with sort of, just sense, you said you were blown away, just I think more drive, more energy, hasn't done this before, and is sort of really hungry and wanting to move forward. And another thing, and I know we're the, you know, we're the deliberative body here, but I was struck by some of the public email comments and traffic that was given to the committee, and I don't have a tally or anything, but my sense was there was some fairly strong opinions from some of our teachers over the last couple of days of having met both of these candidates. And I think that that should carry some weight, and I certainly acknowledge that, you know, people said nice things about both candidates, because they are both very good candidates. But I would worry that we, I would not want us to look for sort of just competence and experience over, and give up on some real sort of energy movement and passion. We have good administrators, I believe. We're not a district in crisis. We don't need somebody to come in who has superintendent experience to kind of, you know, put things back together. We have staff, experienced staff, principals, and administrative office curriculum directors who are able to, you know, to keep us going. And going a little too much now, but I just think we shouldn't discount the different energy levels and the inspirational levels here, and what that means for, in the schools, and the energy and positivity that somebody could bring to the teachers, at least that's what they've reflected back to us in their comments. So, thanks.
Jamison, and then Ira.
Picking back on Dave's comments. It seems like moving forward, a lot of the issues in our district will be really political issues. Do we regionalize, do we close a school and combine some schools? It's going to take a person who can actually deliver a message pretty directly and concisely, and I felt like, and his answers were constantly coalescing as she was trying to, as she was addressing the questions that she had. I didn't feel like I was getting a lot of information from her, even though there's a lot of conversation. I felt like Catherine was saying things to me that had a, and she got to that point fairly quickly, while still being conversational in the house. And I felt, made left of me feeling like I heard her say a lot of things, but I didn't really get the information that needed from her. And I think that moving forward, the person that we hire for this job is going to need to be able to communicate not only with constituencies inside the building, but with the finance committees of each of the towns, and then back and forth with representatives from Boston about what we really need here in this community, not related to what they think is expedient, or economical, or in vote.
I was struck how the emails from a variety of teachers and staff worked pretty split down the middle. Subjectively, I thought it was quite a contrasted interview. I thought, like, it's very intimidating to answer these very robust questions in front of such a group. I thought they were both nervous at times. Dr. Carey started off a little tentative and slow, but I really liked how she found her footing. And she was really answering the questions from, I think, a pretty experienced perspective, and I thought she answered them very comprehensively, okay? I thought our second candidate was charismatic, but I didn't see the robust, comprehensive explanations. I also, subjectively, feel that Lynn Carey is who she says she is. I think the second candidate has a lot of passion, but that's how it came off to me. I felt, you know, superintendent, you have to talk to a wide body of people on a regular basis, and you have to be able to regulate yourself. I liked how Lynn Carey found her footing, and she kind of kept it for the majority of the time. That was my impression. Anyone else?
I just think it's important to also keep in mind, there's other pieces of information that should be taken into account, like their resumes, like the site visits, that the interview is just one piece of a puzzle, and it is intimidating to be in a big group like this, that, you know, some people have on base, some people off base. I think both candidates did a really nice job. I think the site candidate had more energy, but I do think it's important to keep in mind the practical history and the experiences that Dr. Carey has had in a lot of different, more similar, in my sense, settings to what we're looking for. And she spoke a lot more about going out to the community, and talking to the selectmen boards, and talking to the finance committees, and I think, to the point you brought up earlier about the politics that are coming up, that someone's going to need to really be thoughtful and active in this area. They probably both would do a good job, and I was impressed that she really thought that to be carefully explained.
Elaine?
Also, I don't think you have to be concerned with Dr. Carey's energy or taking us further. She, I mean, we on the site visit were like, oh my gosh, she's going to think she died and came to heaven when she comes to our district compared to the district she's in, which has a lot of challenges we luckily don't. But every single person across the twenty-five or something interviews we did that day spoke to her always taking it further, her endless, boundless energy, like her, she said herself, she answers every email. I mean, I'm like, who does that? You know? So I don't think you have, I think she will take us to the next level. I don't think she'll just get here and say, whoo, I'm here, I'm doing my time. At all, I don't get that sense. She's a very driven person, from what we gathered that day.
Judy?
I definitely have the sense, my problem with the first candidate, at least my impression of her, was that when she went off script, what she really knows came out, right? She, if she was just sort of ad-libbing, you could almost instantly heard her experience and her authority and her deep understanding of what all the issues are that we all sort of face in this environment. But when she was on message, she was confusing and unclear, and she was trying to maintain a script and just sort of say words that just, it was just sort of noise. And I struggled with, what I'm struggling with her is that I know she's smart and capable, and is probably has a firm handle on things, and is really open when she doesn't. But I worry about how she's going to communicate out, how that's going to present out into the community, because we are ambassadors for the town, the people that elected us. We have to be able to present a clear and concise message and sort of, and build support, like the question said, like, how do you build support? I think her plan is good, I just am concerned about how she's actually going to put that plan out to the world, like, what's it, how's that message going to land out? That's my biggest fear, honestly.
I will say that we've all been to selectman meetings, we've all been to town meetings, and I think you have to keep in mind that you have to have a candidate that can remain calm, when other people cannot. And she did give me that impression, that she could remain calm.
Despite the distractions?
Right, despite the distractions.
So I do want to address that, because I thought that was...
You need to speak up.
Sorry, I thought that was one question that really sort of separated them a little bit. I did hear some things that I liked, and the leadership style question from both candidates. You know, Kate started with the, that we have a responsibility to produce productive citizens and will make the world a better place. And she kind of got lost in the middle of the question. And then towards the end she came out to, and the people in the arts are good leaders because they think holistically, which I thought was an interesting insightful point, but there was sort of a middle of the question where she was, she wound around. Whereas with Lynn, it was, you really have to boil stuff down, also when she's talking about how do you sell a budget. Plans are great for the small percentage of the population, who will beat them, but boiling it down to a sheet or a PowerPoint, I thought that was a good way to, you know, she talked about taking a concise message to the voters, so I thought that was something that she actually did ask.
This is an echo Greg's comment a little bit, that to me, there was a clear differentiation in the sophistication of their responses towards the budget philosophy question. And that's why, that's why I would say that Ms. Carey is seemingly more ready to go right out of the box. She clearly thought about these things, thought them through, thought through the interaction with the political spheres of influence in our community, had had some exposure to political types, governmental units in the past, that the experience level with other candidates was up there in that, in that, and you could say that that's a potentially narrow area or not, but that's the one thing that you can, that I've built, is you could really tease out of their answers, one was better, and how to answer the other.
But I have to counter that Kate has actually, she's been one of us, she's been on a speaking
board, she's involved in that, she knows what it's like to sit on the other side of the table and read, and sort of take in the information. So while I understand that, I completely support what you're saying, but I also think that Kate has school perspective, because she's intentionally played a part in that sort of, in that role.
I actually agree with everything you're saying, too. That's the beautiful thing about this decision.
Jamison, you had mentioned that there was a point with, I think, Lynn, that you didn't really know where she was coming from. And I had that same, almost probably at the same time, like, what are you saying? And I had that moment also with Kate, and it was on, where she got a little confused, and I was thinking, what are you, and then I thought, you know what? If you sit here, you're sitting down there, and you're looking this way, you get that same perception, I go, we are intimidating, you know? So I can see them both losing their train of thought and having it sound kind of gobbledygooky a little bit, and who regains that quicker, and who keeps that calmness? I'm really big on the calm side, because you know how explosive some of our town meetings can be. And I think, personally, I think they're both ready to go out of the box, and that's why we're having such a hard time. So no thank you for bringing them both to us, for goodness sakes. Anybody else? Any thoughts right now? We have a motion to hire Lynn Carey, we can take a vote, it would be wonderful if it was unanimous, but you need to vote what you think, combining everything that you've heard. Everybody got the emails today, no one was left out of the rating of emails.
I just thought that was great to get the emails.
I think it came down to, I think it was very balanced, like Ira said, so it didn't really help us at all.
It just happened to come to me.
It did help you, which is good, yeah. Well, it didn't help me in the sense that I think in the end it was balanced. And so once again, we're both into, they're very nice people, they're both ready to go outside of the box. What one little thing will tip the scale one way or the other.
Sure.
I would still like to make a second motion, not motion, but a second appeal for Kate. I just feel that she would have, she, again, I did meet with her long enough to know, unfortunately I went away for the meet and greets. I think she has the fire in her belly and the ability to motivate the teachers to bring not so much a new drive, but just a fresh base, a little bit, I don't know why I'm saying a fire in the belly, I just, I can read people a lot of times. I really like Lynn, I enjoyed our meeting up there. I just, of course, I don't have a vote, but I just wanted to voice one last time, I think she'd be great for our district, long-term.
That's the problem.
It is, very tough, very tough.
So Cindy?
Yes, Bill.
Prior to a vote, something Trevor just said sparked, the question about that both candidates went into testing, into, you know, the testing is something that is a hot topic. I felt that Ms. Clark, when she said, the real, the real answer to testing is that we have to enrich the child through real experience, and also that we have to, we have to look at socio-emotional learning. And I didn't hear that from Dr. Carey. I don't know, I was not on a site visit, but I think that, that these two points are too big for us to leave here on the table. You know, there was a, Ms. Clark has an understanding of how Maslow's needs can impact the child prior to sitting down to take a test. I did not get that from Dr. Carey, so.
I think I would counter that by saying throughout Dr. Carey's conversations, I think I didn't write the tally down, but I heard at least on ten of the questions, somewhere in the context of the question, that it's all about the kids. And she was consistent in her theme in that respect. And I don't generally, you know, sit and spot a lot of things, but I came in, I hear, I saw the energy with Kate, I saw, and I was watching as Lynn sort of fumbled and stumbled at the start, but when the question was asked about budgets, there was no hesitation, not one second's hesitation. And the follow-up question, there was no hesitation. How do you build a team? How do you react? How do you build budgets? How do you go about building, you know, how she goes about building the budgets, presenting them, justifying them, selling them? There was no hesitation whatsoever. I didn't get, personally, didn't get the same feel with Kate. I got sort of, to me, almost boilerplate language. There's a lot about Kate I like, but I've been doing this for a few years, and the key is being able to go to five different school committees, read four different communities' pulses, and pull that all together. pulses, and pull that all together while working with an administration to drive what, you know, is, as Phil points out and everyone at this table probably feels, is the leading district in this area of the state, if not one of the leading districts across the state. And I, you know, I just came away with the feeling that Lynn's the one that presents to me the best opportunities to maintain that, so.
Very well said, and I appreciate your experience.
One other point, when you were talking about the Judy's question there with the town governments, Kate used the word preventative, and I've always liked the word proactive. And I read back through my notes on Lynn, and she did not use that word, I did not remember her using that word, but all of my things were, what I was writing down was more of a proactive type of thing. But again, she didn't use that word, but Kate actually did use preventative. And to me, that is, that's a scary word when we start talking about towns and boards and that type of thing. I think we need to be proactive, as we have been with Marty. Just a point.
Anyone else get something to share?
Yes.
So, when we did our first vote here, I supported Kate, which is not how I thought I was going to coming in here tonight, but I thought Kate did a really nice job. I liked her enthusiasm, I liked everything that everybody has said about her. But just in the last couple minutes, sitting here, thinking of what role are we asking her to fill? And we're asking her to be the superintendent. So she talked about missing hands-on, missing kids, missing families. That's not really what the superintendent, the superintendent would love to be able to do more of that in any school, but that's not really what we're asking her, you know, to do. I think she had a lot of good things, a lot of things about motivating teachers, working with teachers, but again, at the superintendency, you're one level removed from that, from that direct contact. So for me, that just made me question a little bit more and lean in the last few minutes more back to what I think Lynn would bring us. I like them both, I think we're very fortunate. And I like the way you framed it. You know, one's ready now and one maybe has more growth potential, but that was just my thought.
Thank you. Anyone else that hasn't spoken, maybe? Jan?
Well, I just speak about the budgetary side, you know, I think they really paid you on that as well. And I took some notes on that particular one, she said she would use strong justifications, which I thought was really a good keyword there, and PowerPoint, and explain to people why you're asking for these things, setting high standards and asking for what we need.
Transparency.
Yep, I wrote that down too. So, I thought she definitely had it on the budget. That was one of, one of the questions that kind of made a difference, the others, it's hard to say, you know, which one.
Anyone else? Ready for a vote?
I guess I have just made a very important point that would be nice to be answered. So maybe just a quick, it would be nice to know if anybody's mind was changed the other way, if not, good to know that we'll be doing a vote.
Want to take another straw?
I think that may be, I don't think we need to, but I'm just throwing it out there so that it might be answered.
Well, we can take a straw vote and then we can just continue talking. So, we do have a motion on the table, but that doesn't prevent us from taking a straw vote. We're still discussing. So if you were discussing-
Or just even if it's not a straw vote, anybody's mind changed besides me, or is it a different direction?
I heard one, glancing his way.
Again, they're both very strong candidates, and it's just that one little thing in your mind that leans, and for me, it was calmness. It was that person who was able to be calm. And I think that was Lynn or Dr. Carey.
Hi.
Go ahead.
So, I was, I feel even more convinced after tonight, you know, that I could walk out of here and, you know, be happy with whichever decision was made. And I did coming in, I thought, personally, I thought Kate presented much more strongly tonight than the first time around. She still was one of the stronger people the first time around, but anyway, so it was harder, actually, honestly, going tonight. Still, though, the thing for me as part of it is just picturing, okay, we have a very good, strong leadership team. Who's going to be the best person to work with them? And, you know, and also be their boss. And that's, you know, a nuanced role, but be one who, I think, works with a philosophy that we like, I think, in that collaborative style, and will kind of lead among leaders. And I felt like Lynn, and I still feel like, is better, ready to be in that position today. And I think Kate would grow into it, but, you know, that's how I feel. And I think, and again, you know, maybe if the, if we had, if it was different in terms of the personnel we had, or maybe I'm definitely, I don't think so. I think, you know, again, I think, I thought that, to the points about sort of philosophy and things, I do think Kate thinks deeply about that, I think Lynn thinks about it, but I also think in both cases, what they need to be able to do is have good people around them and, and find out what they're thinking and then, and be open to that, and then make the decision how to go forward, and so.
We'll have a flood next, to see how we get to that.
Yeah, will the courage still be in the pockets?
Don?
I tried to look at both candidates from a school committee point of view and as a former administrator's point of view. And they both kind of came together. I think Lynn came across very well as being more seasoned than Kate. Kate I saw more as a cheerleader. And I don't mean that in a negative sense, I just mean in a, that she, she's not quite ready yet, not just the way I feel about her. I feel that, you know, she's got some ideas. When we asked about budget, how you do a budget, she said, well, to communicate. But I didn't hear much more than that. And Lynn told us that she'd meet with the principals and talk to school committees and kind of get the pulse. And I think she has a better picture of what her expectations, what our expectations are. So from that point of view, I think that either candidate I could live with, but if I, you know, when I make my vote, I think I'm going to go with Lynn. I think I have to go with Lynn.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, Judy?
I hear what you're all saying, I really do, I really, really do. But I feel like our school district is at a crossroads. We're coming up at it, right? And so we're at a point where we have to really assess who we are and have a vision for not only what our students are like, but our teachers are like, our administration is like. And she did come off a little cheerleader-ish, I'm not going to, I'm not going to deny that. But I'm left with a sense that it's a soldier versus, cheerleader's the wrong word, but I'll stick with it. And, and, but I just feel like that part of that long game that you were talking about is that she's going to get to the place where she's going to see where, where we need to go, and she's going to have, she's going to help us build that vision, like help coalesce that idea of what the next phase of our district looks like. I absolutely agree, Lynn is going to hit the ground running, she's going to be awesome. She really is. And she's, and she's been in difficult situations, many difficult situations, difficult school districts, very hard situations to deal with. I just wish she brought a little more, a little more of a blimmer there. There was something that sort of sparked my interest and said, you know what, not only can she do this, but she also has some long-term goals for us, where she might have a bigger picture idea for us and where we could go.
Did you get that feeling from like the whole package deal or just tonight?
Well, I didn't go to either one of the site visits, I sent my husband. So I got his feedback. In addition to all the emails that we got, I also got some other information from former school committee members, just some feedback. And, you know, and I heard and read the site visit information, so.
Almost every interview of the 25 said Lynn is all about the kids in the district and how passionate she is and what a strong leader she is. I mean, I, I don't think she, I mean, I think this is a hard environment, but I think, I don't think we're going to be, get any less from her passion. I think she just isn't maybe as Kate, I, before I came in here, Kate wasn't even on my radar. And she, I almost voted for her because she is charismatic and she will be, she's passionate and she's had some great experience. And, you know, had things been closer, I may have gone that way, but I have no doubt that Lynn will give us what Kate will give us also. Lynn? And Lynn?
When I first came here, I really thought I was going to vote for Lynn. Kate came across, she was articulate, she was clear, she was concise, and I thought, okay, so I've changed my mind and I'm good to go. But then I was thinking, if I'm an angry parent, if I'm a frustrated parent, who will I want to go to? If I'm a teacher who has a really good idea, like I really want to try this, it's never been done before, who would I go to? You know, which one would I want to go to? If I'm sitting in Sunderland Elementary during a contentious budget, whose face do I want to see that? And I went back to my, my original instinct, I think I like Lynn. She's, she's the person I would go to if I was frustrated and angry, and I think she'd be the person I would go to if I had a good, awesome idea or a great problem. And she's, I think, the person that I want to stand in an elementary school and say to the voters, this is why, I think this, this is what we need to do. And I know maybe you don't agree with it, but we're going to be okay. And I think she could deliver that message.
Yeah, so I'm in sort of a similar situation where Catherine really made a lot of ground with her personal parents tonight. But to address Judy's points directly, I felt like I got that already from, from Lynn's cover letter. I mean, after the first paragraph, which is just, I'd like to apply for the job, she talks about sharing my vision, working tirelessly to improve culture and systems. And then in the paragraph after that, she talks about facilitating a team of stakeholders. So I really got a sense of where Catherine's style might be, or this is how she presented it at least, to come in, listen to both sides and then decide. Lynn comes across as someone who would come in and get people to figure out the answer for themselves, is at least how that comes across.
That was actually said during the day.
Yeah, so, I don't feel, just because she is low-key doesn't mean we should underestimate her ability to create meaningful change.
Anyone else, already, do you have a hand?
Yeah, I mean, it's really hard to run a school, and it's even harder to run a district. And three, I think Lynn said, I do three things, I like to bring clarity, simplicity, and priorities, and I like to streamline the processes.
I got that.
She gets the system, she gets the big picture. And Cindy, I agree with you, you know, being calm. Poise is not boring. Poise is real functional. And when you're talking to such a wide array of personalities that have different agendas, you have to be a good communicator, and you have to be able to regulate and maintain your poise. She has that. I think, you know, the interview committee, they brought up, they brought forward two child-centered people, one's a special ed background and one's a guidance background. And they rose through the ranks to administrators. But I think what we saw here was it comes down to experience and maintaining poise. And I thought there was a big contrast, so.
Keith?
So the clarity, simplicity, priority stuck out for me too. And it seems to me that somebody can go out to the towns and sell a budget, and that's what I want my superintendent to do. As a teacher, the superintendent doesn't motivate me, doesn't inspire me. My students motivate me, my colleagues motivate me, my material motivates me. I need my superintendent to be able to go out, form a budget, sell it, communicate it clearly, and then keep the calm composure when everything hits the fan.
Can anybody not write those words down?
About the site visit, I think all of your concerns, you know, were hail. I mean, again, we have two things at stake, we both know this. I think Kate had a great passion for longevity and driving this district for a long time with a different kind of vision. I think it's kind of, I want to say generational, it was a difference there. And, but, but definitely from the site visits that we had that day, every one of the issues you brought up, or I want to be a parent, I heard her handle those situations. First people talk about how she can handle those situations, like being a parent, a teacher of that company, she did collaborate, but again, not at loss with any good ones for sure.
Anyone else? So, we've reached that point. So we have a motion and a second, and because Frontier went first, we'll go first again. Again, it'd be great to be unanimous, but you have to vote how you have to vote. So, I will, excuse me?
So we're not doing LIFO?
Doing, yeah, really. I'm not an accountant. Okay, so Mary Ray, so we have a motion, just to remind everyone, for Lynn. So all I need is a yes or a no, or a yea or a nay, and it also says on my paperwork that you can abstain. So, feel free. Mary Raymond?
Yes.
Robert Holler?
Yes.
Alan Lipt?
Yes.
Lynn Roberts?
Yes.
William Arapizzi?
Yes.
Bill Smith?
Yes.
Judy Pierce?
Yes.
Keith McFarlane?
Yes.
Robert Decker?
Yes.
Phil Kantor?
Yes.
Cindy Womet? She's going to be the wild one. Drum roll. Absolutely, positively, yes. Thank you all. Yeah. Pay attention.
For the union, just to, we'll, we'll take the same vote for the union for the vote for Lynn Carey as the candidate of choice. And I'll start with Whately this time. Don?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Gregory?
Yes.
Douglas?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Ira?
Yes.
Elaine?
Yes.
Janice?
Yes.
Yes, and I can report that Frontier just wanted the buzzer.
Frontier just wanted the buzzer. Jamison?
Yes.
And Kenneth? Yes.
Kate?
May I have a unanimous vote?
Good job, committee. We will be taking a 10-minute recess.
We'd like to entertain a motion, to have a 10-minute recess.
What else do we have to do? We have to go call the candidate of choice to make sure we can leave. All those in favor of a recess? Anyone oppose? Phil did, and then Alan seconded it. Let's go, guys. Okay, so we are reconvening after our 10-minute, 8:44 recess, so we have to do that with a motion. Do I hear a motion from Frontier?
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
All of those in favor? Opposed?
And from the union, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second, okay. All in favor?
Okay, so what we did was we went out, we found a place where we actually had three bars, and the wonderful janitorial people were coming around the corner with the machine. Just to keep her running.
It's been one of those nights.
It's been one of those nights, yeah.
They weren't working, they weren't on break.
So Kenny told them to take a break, and, so, so we called Lynn, and she, I'll let Kenny tell you that part because I was holding the phone, but she is, she said yes, and she's very excited, it sounded very excited in her voice. You can take it from there.
And I think, I lost counted around nine "I'm thrilleds." She is absolutely thrilled to accept the offer of negotiating and subject-to-contract negotiations and becoming the next superintendent of schools for the region and the union, so.
She actually said, so who's gonna call me? When are they gonna call me? Am I gonna get an email, or am I gonna get a letter? Am I gonna?
Details, good on the details.
And he said, you'll probably get all three. So, okay. So we ended by telling her that we would be back in touch, because we had to come back and tell you all that she had accepted, and we had just a little bit more business. So what we had done was, I talked to Marty, and she had reminded us that what we had done was you had, you, you could vote to allow us to negotiate the contract with her as we did with Marty, on Marty's present contract. That's why you all received a copy of that contract. If the candidate requests something above what is currently in the contract, then we will come back to, we'll call an executive session, and then we will go from there. So what we can determine tonight is the amount her salary can be, but other than that, it would have to go into an executive session, so it, but you could vote to let us do what we did before, and then we will meet with her and have that, have that conversation and deliver our contract to her. Bill, questions, thoughts?
Yeah, Mary's probably the only one that's heard this speech before. She's been here as long as I know, almost, but this is one of those opportunities. Contracts seem to, the next one picks up where the last one left off, and that seems to be where we go all the time. The endpoint seems to be the starting point. And I just want to admonish you, all of you, that this is an opportunity that you don't get very often. Look at the contract, all the components of the contract. These are not veteran superintendents, okay? They are not coming here with 15 years' experience. They do not have a lot of leverage in terms of demand. If there are benefits, like disability insurance, term life insurance, all those things that are in that contract, this is your only shot at negotiating them, changing them, or bringing someone in at a lower salary. Because I've been, people will get sick, you're listening to me, but I've been sitting in this chair for 40 years, and we never, ever go backwards. It's always, you pick up from this point, go forward, this point, go forward, before you, you know what you're looking at, 150,000, 175,000 for a first-year superintendent. I just, I'm not saying they're not worth that, but all I'm saying is, this is an opportunity for us to take a look at the whole contract, not that I don't trust the two of you to do this wonderful, but I think it's incumbent upon all 27 of us to take that contract apart and look at it and say, this is our opportunity. Do we want to change any of this? Otherwise, nothing will change, and it's three, and there's gonna be a renewal written into it, it's gonna be three, and four, and five, and six. And I'll be sitting here six years from now, see? I told you.
I'm with Bill on this, backwards though.
Except, I believe this candidate has another offer out there.
She turned it down.
So, doesn't mean she can't reconsider if we go.
I understand that.
We don't want to play games.
Sell the store to a person who doesn't have superintendent experience.
Because you also went through the process of only putting forth two candidates to us, of, I don't know how many applied, and they were, so, like.
There, there is on the Mass website, all the information about just how common all of these benefits are, and it's okay, I, I don't think it's playing games to alter, to, to look at that and to talk about it, and.
I don't think, I'm not trying, I'm not trying to play games.
No, I, I know.
I voted for her. I spoke better than you have.
I'm just saying, you don't, you don't lowball somebody. Okay.
Well, we have the salary.
Raise your hand. All righty. Keith, Jan.
I think it's the same thing, I don't know if that we all got the contract.
It's online.
No, well, you got, I sent an email to Donna and asked her to send everyone a copy of, I did it on the 23rd, you should have gotten it on the 23rd.
Nope.
Nope. No, I didn't get one, I just happened to know what's in it. I didn't get one of them yesterday.
What are you, what are you playing?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I have a copy, which maybe we can print out.
I have a copy right here, we can print out.
Oh, okay.
27 times. Bob?
I, I can read somebody else's, I don't need to.
Man, hand count on copies so I don't waste paper.
Who needs a copy?
From the regional budget.
27.
I mean, really, raise your hand, I'm serious, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7.
I'm really serious, 27.
Here it is, here we go.
Okay, I have a question still.
Okay, Bob?
I lost train of thought, ma'am.
Have you trained up the tracks?
Yeah.
Cindy?
I'm sorry, I'm trying to find where it was.
The salary range, though, was advertised.
It was advertised at, I believe, 135 to 145. So we do have to stay within that, and Marty, right now, is at 136. So I understand that, the longer you work somewhere, the lower, the less you make.
May I just say, as, as brand-new in this school committee, I would love the opportunity to, to take a look at this.
Yeah, everybody should.
That's all I'm asking.
What do you two mean?
That's fine. We can wait any time.
I do agree, I don't want to lowball someone, I don't, and I don't think that that's the aim of this.
Yeah, I agree, well.
So the 29th is Monday night.
We have another meeting already scheduled?
Um, we have a meeting scheduled for the 29th.
We've given away the.
I'm sorry, I'm just trying to figure it out, so if you can look and see where it is.
Well, if he's gonna make copies, it doesn't matter now. We do have a meeting on the 29th, Monday night, right?
Right now, we have, well, we have, we could, no, we don't have a meeting on the 29th.
We had said we were gonna be, we needed to on the 29th.
Correct, I know.
No, I know. I know, I've been on, last time we met, you said, and they're all in there.
Donna needs about a week to post, so tonight is the 24th, the earliest we could do it is the 2nd of March.
She needs 48 hours to post.
I'm just telling you what Donna tells me, she likes a week to post.
Probably posting at 9:00 or 9:00.
Yeah, no, it's technically, it's, it's, it's technically 48 hours, and you can ask our friends over there, because they're the ones.
We could adjourn to a date, sir.
Mm-hmm.
You know, we could adjourn this meeting, the 29th, without having to really post, correct?
Oh, you got me on that one.
Well, we got counsel.
Pat, can we adjourn the meeting and just reopen it on the 29th?
Adjourn to.
Not adjourn, adjourn to reopen.
Recession.
Make a law when we can recess.
Can't recess it, you can adjourn and state publicly that you're going to reopen on.
The 29th, Monday?
The 29th, okay?
Does everybody open that?
Yes, she'll have to repost it.
But it's only 48 hours, right?
Adjourn and repost.
So if she posted tomorrow, Thursday, Friday?
Exclusive of Saturday and Sunday.
Correct.
Thursday, Friday, and Monday.
Yeah, so we can have her post it for Monday.
We posted this position for 130 to 145.
A 130?
Yes. You can't go below 130.
I understand, we will, I understand.
I thought it was 135.
You can go as high as you want on the other end, if you can.
We all seem to like to grab it at 145.
Cindy, we're looking for a motion to authorize the Georgia unit again.
Rejourn treat, that we.
No, no, because it sounds like.
Sidebar conversations going on all around the table, can we please just calm down?
Okay, so what we have here is, I received the copy of the superintendent's contract from Donna, that's what I printed out. I asked her, I was just trying to find the email so I could read it to you, I asked her to email it to everyone, she then sent me an email saying that she did, okay? So whether or not anyone got it, it, sorry about that. Okay, so we can, according to Pat, who knows everything there is to know about contracts and negotiations and school committees, we can adjourn to reopen our meeting on Monday the 29th, but we still have to post it.
So what's the difference?
So we can just adjourn the meeting and then just post another meeting.
So this isn't just salary stuff, this is the other stuff?
This is, it's a bunch of stuff.
Right, contract.
Because the salary is kind of easy, if it's really 135 to 1.
Well, it was 130 to 145, or 135 to 145.
Whatever.
Pat said it was 130.
I was under the idea it was 135 to 145.
Pat doesn't have a brochure because.
We can work that out Monday.
You know, you just start at the bottom, because it's, you know.
We can work that out Monday, and I agree with Phil, but I also agree with Phil, oh, that's cute, on their points.
No, Bill wants to go.
No, I said I agree with both of you that it's a perfect time to do this, and I also
No, I said, I agree with both of you that it's a perfect time to do this, and I also
agree that there's things in here that are just standard for everyone. So... Does anyone have a problem with Monday? Yes. 6 o'clock? 5 o'clock, 5:30 is a little tough.
Is there a designated person that can look to see what is standard for districts of our size? All these, statewide, every single superintendent contract is public, every benefit is tabulated on... So, like, what is standard for our size?
Are you volunteering?
We already have to... Didn't we get that in our little subcommittee? We got...
We did.
...list of all of the district's salary.
Right.
Salary. Salary.
But they're looking at the...
Oh, at the...
They're looking at the Ben.
This is the Ben, which is how many offer...
There wouldn't be a spreadsheet, right?
Thank you, sir.
But they have all that already on...
That's pretty standard.
Disability and whatever.
The salary, you already know what the salary range is, and that's why...
The brochure, it says the salary was 135 to 145, three-year contract, benefit is negotiable.
Okay. So it's 135 to 145, benefits negotiable.
Okay, so why don't we also make that Monday night, the 29th, an executive session?
That's what it should be.
Which it should be. And so everybody will have good reading material for the weekend, and then come with some questions, and we'll get through this. Time's 6 o'clock? Okay, and I'll have Donna send us notices, or I'll ask Donna.
Hopefully she sends them.
Ooh, she said she did, she did.
Can I just say, I don't see that much...
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. Wait, wait, go ahead.
That might be the case.
Why are we doing this?
Can you do that?
Cindy, why are we doing this? There's not that much...
I know, there's not.
Look at this.
But I think...
Why bring us all back together?
Because Elaine, everybody hasn't had an opportunity to read it, and both Ken and I went over this with Marty already, so we have had an opportunity to read it.
And I don't think...
And I just don't think it's fair if we don't all get a chance to read it. This is a big deal.
There's nothing outrageous in that.
And I don't...
Apart from the... It may be important to come back to this meeting, Patty, if possible. I mean, it really only makes sense to be able to know what something costs, right?
Do we...
We can invite Patty in.
Could I just make a suggestion? I personally don't want to negotiate or talk about negotiating tactics on a contract on public television, personally, live public television.
Right.
So I think we're appropriate to adjourn and reconvene on Monday, as inconvenient as it is, and really, I think it's not a good reflection if she wants to go and get a tape of the meeting to see what's going on right now. So I personally would advocate for asking Patty for some information on the costs of various component pieces that don't jibe with the rest of the contracts in the district, and we can proceed from there, because I think those are the things that are of concern to, you know, people around the table, in terms of the contract building on itself.
I thought that we have been, Mr. Cooper, all contracts are almost identical now for all administrators. Every time we've been renewed, our contracts are identical.
So we can go over that on Monday night? If you would be so kind as to be, to come in at 6 o'clock?
I can be there.
All right, so we've all agreed on that? Can we move along?
Sure. I have a motion for the union, for once, first of all. I have a motion from Mr....
Ken, I move that we adjourn and reconvene on Monday at 6.
The motion's been...
An executive session.
An executive session.
Okay, for Frontier, can I have a motion?
Second.
Second? Okay, Judy Pierce?
Union, hey, wait a minute. Union, all in favor?
Sorry, we're going to have to say it again.
Thank you.
It's been one of those nights. You want to raise your hand? Okay, all those at Frontier, raise your hand? Opposed? Thanks, everybody, for a great process. Thank you so much.